All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, to order here in the MAPS Central Administration Building Boardroom. Do we have a little call, please? Sarah.
Jacqueline Grimmler.
Here.
Mike Cornish.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Nubs Ashkay.
Here.
Amber DeRizzo.
Here.
Kevin Lake.
Here. Thank you. Can you please rise as you're able to testify before the pledging allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Merrill Air Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct has the expectation for all in attendance.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda this evening is an opportunity to public comment to the board. We did not have any sheets turned in, so we will have no public comment this evening. In lieu of traditional board recognition, since we're not at a capacity crowd, we'll forego that for this month and add what we had for tonight into next month, but wanted to turn it over to Mr. Murray a little bit to talk about passing of Mr. Policki.
Yeah, we just want to recognize that yesterday, a longtime Merrill High School teacher, Guy Policki, passed. He was a teacher at Merrill High School for 31 years. He had just retired in May, which was a very sad day at Merrill High School. His wife, Trina, is a teacher at the middle school. They have two adult students or children that both went through the high school. So it was sudden, and it was a health-related thing that just kind of spiraled very quickly, and it was very sad. And Tricia and her crew did a great job yesterday of accommodating the needs of many adults because of the surprising nature of it, but we were going to miss Guy. He was a great human and an awesome dude, and he was a Uper through and through, and he just had this wisdom and this kind of folksy, very comfortable. So, great guy, and we're going to miss him. So I just wanted to recognize and honor Guy Policki.
Thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to our student board reps, Max and Parker, either one who would like to start this evening.
Last Friday, the school held a 40-student focus group with 10 students from each grade. Teachers would each choose three students they think should attend, which created an accurate representation of the whole school and all different people. The students met in the library and were questioned about their feelings on academics, athletics, activities, and the overall culture at the high school. The facilitators successfully turned it into an environment where students could openly give valuable information and input without bias or pressure. Track softball and baseball are all picking up. Track started their practices on the 10th, and baseball just this week started some introductory throwing practices to ease into the season. And students are transitioning from using physical ID cards to online ID cards that can easily be accessed anywhere from a phone or device. I always forget my wallet. There's been multiple times where I've left it at home or something. So this is definitely a positive and effective way to go about ID cards. And then finally, fourth quarter is just around the corner. That starts right after spring break, which is crazy. As a senior, the last few months, so time flies.
Starting on April 4th, performances of the Spring Musical, Catch Me If You Can, will be put on by the Merrill Theater Jays. From the performers onstage to the musicians in the pit, everyone is working hard to put on an amazing show. Three college campus tours are available to juniors and seniors this year. Students have the opportunity to visit UW's Jamins Point, UW Madison, and UW O'Clare, all taking place in April. April will be a busy month with the musical and college tours, and an even more looked forward to event, CROM. CROM will be on April 12th, with the theme this year being the movie Tangled. After the dance, attendees will have the opportunity to have some fun with their friends while bowling at Lincoln Gardens. This Saturday morning, both the band and the choir leave for their separate trips to Memphis and Nashville. We are arriving at the school at 3:00 a.m. to prepare to leave at 4:00, with a 15-hour drive to Memphis and then Nashville the next day. Both groups have been practicing and preparing for these trips for months and are finally ready to hit the road. Last week on Tuesday, the juniors took the ACT online. It consisted of science, math, reading, writing, and an essay portion. I know I'm definitely happy that I'll never have to take the ACT again.
All right. Thank you, guys. Board members have any clarifying questions on those updates?
What about the FabLab?
Yeah. All of the recognition, I stated earlier.
You can hear from them, so.
There's anything you'd like to add on how the FabLab is going with your class?
Yeah, I've been working on that one with charity, the Rides Charity on Project for a while, just helping them design some things. And really, it's just the FabLab has so many resources. Merrill's like top at the, with schools that have the resources we do with designing and mechanical stuff, woods, metal. We just have a lot of resources that make it super easy. Our teachers know how to use it, so it all works really good.
Good.
You said sometimes you forget your wallet, but never your phone.
It hurts always, but weird.
Everybody gets it. All right. Thank you, Max and Parker. Great updates. Next, we'll have administrative reports. I'll turn it over to Shannon. Just a reminder that board members have opportunity to submit questions, clarifying points before we get to tonight, and you can still ask questions tonight on the record. If things clarify or stated for the director to public.
Thanks. Just for the board's information, because of the weather and the translation today, I did offer or encourage many of our directors who live south of here, endure the worst and whatever, to not make the trip, just to turn around and go back to ours later. So I'll be representing all of them tonight, and I pay attention to what's going on around here. So keep the questions. So the first administrative report is the Piner School for Young Learners Report. Ryan is here. Talks about the monthly enrollment numbers. He's been very busy with grant season and a lot of work with the Head Start offices, and so he's here to answer the questions. Food Service Report is next. That is the monthly report from Laura Crowsey. Participation numbers are in there, as well as some information that she puts in there every month.
We mentioned a few months back something about having to address the food program financially. Is that still in a hover situation?
Yeah, we need to talk around Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, this coming out Monday. So what has happened is we have built up a very generous fund balance, and so the auditors suggested that was not the best business practice to have that fund balance. So sometime ago, the board opted for free lunches, or I'm sorry, free breakfasts. So that has taken its toll on that, so we have to revisit that a little bit. So we'll have a discussion with her on Monday. Mark and I. The Director of People's Services Special Ed Report is there from Amber Aluska. She, her report focuses on some reunification training that she has attended as a result of an intruder or a type of crisis at a school, and her topics that she has attached. Amanda Pat, yes.
I have a question about that. We have the link to see the training that was done, but I'm curious, like, parents ask about things like that. Is that like a link or something that people who are like, because I feel like sometimes we even get questions with board members, they're like, oh, safety, and then something really happens somewhere else. Or I can remember six months back, like, safety stuff in schools was on the news and so that a lot of things. So I'm just curious, like, is that linked to what we saw about the training information? Like, can parents see that?
I will ask Amber while I see her tomorrow. I don't know if they'd answer.
They can. It's that I love you guys training. Yeah. So that's just linked, like, on the MAPS website?
It's not linked on the MAPS website. It was something special that the Department of Justice provided.
Yeah.
But it is open to parents if they wanted to look at it.
So I'll share that with Amber, and then we'll see about how we do that. Amanda Patterson's report is next, Director of CNI. We're in the middle of the state testing season as our peers put it up to finish up the ACT. We're thinking, is it the forward season now at the other levels? She and some others attended a federal funding conference, which was as fun as it sounds. And any questions, I can forward on to her answer.
Andrew Kahler's report is next, the Tech Department Report. Visitor aware is going very well. That's been very smooth for us, and users have adapted to that very easily and very readily, and he's got his data there for help to ask tech kids on those kinds of things. Mark Powell's topic summary sheet is this monthly, the topic summary is about the monthly budget update. He's got some mix of the topic summary sheet there. The Director of Human Resources Report is next, by Heather Solberg. She's not here this evening. She has some information about some video testimonials. She's done a great job of, like, they're gearing up for recruitment season, including college visits, and so she's done a very good job of, like, getting testimonials that will play on a loop at these places and have it on our website. Online MAPS is a great place to work. So if you get a chance, go to our HR page. I try to give those links to the front page, which Heather's working on, and they're also putting together promotional video, kind of a MAPS-type video to take on recruiting and to make available for potential staff, teachers. The updated People's Services Administration and Support Staff Compensation, that's another topic summary sheet from Heather. That's actually going to be discussed a little bit later. That just reflects the CPI increase that we've worked with previously. The, our Nick Wazalik's report is in there. Some maintenance progress were discussed at the Facilities Committee meeting last week. There's some other updates there. Colbison came in and met with the crew at Wondor busing last week, and some of the drivers are signing up with Colbison, which was a positive thing, and so we'll start that transition. And we'll have an actual set meeting time, a regular set meeting moving forward, so we can transition that as smoothly as possible. Superintendent's Report, talked about the virtual learning day from the previous snowstorm that we had. Today's snowstorm, that wasn't, resulted in a virtual learning day at the high school, but not at the other levels because DPI has different instructional minute requirements. So, and hopefully we're out of the woods, and hopefully we don't wake up with a foot of snow tomorrow, and the project will go. The Strategic Planning Phase Two is in there. We did that a week and a half ago, and that went very well. We came out of there with some broad objectives that you'll see here tonight. The goal now is to take those broad objectives and turn them into action plans year by year. And so if, similar to how you approved it in the past with review of the mission vision and the pillars, tonight we're going to talk about approval of those broad objectives, and then we can start taking the next steps to actual goals and action steps. So that's been a very good process so far, and a good team, and many, many people came back for that. That's what I meant.
All right. Any questions for Shannon on the superintendent's report? Otherwise, we're going to move along to committee reports next. We'll start with Facilities Committee, attached with the draft minutes from the March 12th committee meeting. Myself as chair, and other members of our Facilities Committee are available for board member questions. Any questions for the Facilities Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Human Resources Committee, attached with the draft minutes from that March 12th committee meeting. John Smith is chair, and other members of Finance Human Resources Committee are available for board member questions. Any board member questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to our CTP, or Curriculum Technology People's Services Committee, attached with the draft minutes from that March 12th committee meeting. Ron Liberty as committee chair is available, as well as other committee members. Were board member questions? Any board members have questions for our CTP committee? Hearing none, we'll move down the agenda. Unfinished business, we do not have anything in that category, so we'll go to the new Board of Education business for this month. We'll start with the first item, the approval of the Head Start Federal Grant. There's attached topic summary sheet from Mark Powell and Ryan Martinovich, and there is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on that agenda item or topic? John?
Motion to approve the 2025-2026 federal Head Start Grant.
Motion by John. We have a second, a second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the annual review and approval of the MAPS Head Start Five-Year Strategic Goals. The topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
Move to approve the 2025-26 MAPS Head Start Five-Year Strategic Goals.
Paul's second.
Motion by Paul. We have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or agenda item? Any questions or discussion on the motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for 2025-2026. We have a topic summary sheet shared with us from Mark Powell and Ryan Martinovich with a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item, topic? John?
Motion to approve the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for 2025-2026.
Motion by John. We have a second, a second by Mike. We have any discussion or questions on this motion or this agenda item? Any discussion or questions on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the CISA 9 Approval of Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for 2025-2026. Attached was a topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item or topic? Ron?
Motion to approve the Head Start 2025-2026 T/TA Plan.
Motion by Ron. We have a second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. If any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the current or future, we call summer projects, including roofing concern at Washington Elementary. Topic summary sheet was provided by Nick Wazalik, and there is a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion? Nubs?
I move to approve the summer maintenance projects as funding is available.
We have a motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to that motion or this topic? Any highlights you wanted to go through on there? It seemed pretty concise, roofing, some pavings.
Kind of the general thing. We run roofing rotation in our district, and so that was the question. One is the next one up.
All right. Any additional questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2025 Summer School Academy Program, attached to our topic summary sheets separately done by Ally Libby and Brad Potter. Recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item or topic? Ron?
Motion to approve the schedules, course offerings, registration materials for MAPS Summer School at Richmond 2025.
Motion by Ron. We have a second by Amber. Any discussion or questions on this motion or this topic? Any highlights Shannon or Tricia would like to make?
Tricia?
Yeah.
Certainly, a lot, you know, a lot of work goes into, you know, what Ally and Brad put into that, and a lot of the highlights, they look at things that have been successful in the past as presented at the committee meeting, and just making sure things are engaging, and also there's coming up, and we can go through that more later, more into the kicking off the school year, right? Making sure everybody has a good start to next school year by some extra opportunities in August, I believe, too, or July, so.
Yeah, so they're introducing a, which new this year, kind of tend to act 20 the early literacy programming, is they're offering a boot camp for students in the grades K3, I think it is, for students that fall behind a certain, below a certain testing threshold to help them get their literacy skills beefed up prior to the start of the school year. So that'll be a boot camp, that'll be new for us this year, largely, well, certainly influenced by Act 20. All right?
I guess I can add one thing. We're taking a little bit of a different approach to students that are eligible for summer school, especially in math. We're looking at percentages, and we met with the math teachers to really see where a student's grade percentage falls, if they're a better candidate for in-person summer school, or if they're a better candidate for credit recovery. So just kind of taking a deeper look at making sure that what we're offering students are going to be successful.
All right. Thank you for adding that on there. Good insight. Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next agenda item is our high school CAD and FabLab Computer Refresh. A topic summary sheet was provided by Andrew Kahler. Recommended motion by our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the CDW MSI Workstations for the MHS CAD and FabLab Computer Refresh in the amount of $39,653, taken from the technology level.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or agenda item?
Just so the board knows, this is common this time of year to bring these kind of refresh proposals to the board. This is a planned refresh. These are seven years old, but it's built in the, planned in the Amber's budget, and so that's generally the course of business made during this time of year. We addressed the refresh issues for the FabLab and the CISA CAD and FabLab.
Ron?
He also mentioned that we're paying the same as what we paid for the ones we got seven years ago, and are 10 times faster.
Still going to work out the details on if there's a buyback program or what was going on there. There's some different options, and that wasn't finalized yet. Just focus on the refresh and get more data, bring that back at a later time. Any additional questions or discussion on this agenda item or on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a MAPS school psychologist, attached as a topic summary sheet from Amber Aluska. Recommended motion, different purposes, both came from our CTP and Finance HR Committees. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item tonight? Ron?
Motion to approve the hiring of 1.0 full-time employee district psychologist in lieu of contracting school psychologists days of CISA 9 beginning of the 2025-2026 school year, where a cost of $68,000 to be taken from the general fund.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? A second by Mike. Anything you'd like to add before I have board member questions or discussion on that, Shannon?
Yeah, so as we shared pretty extensively, we have CTP and HR Finance. We contract with CISA for additional school psych services, and anytime you contract through CISA, it's a little pricey, you know, you're paying charges and those kind of things. And so that, combined with the increasing need of grievance in the topic summary sheet, certainly it's shared with the committees. The volumes of 504 plans are growing pretty rapidly in our district, and all districts for that matter, and so that work has fallen on our counselors, and so this position before is the opportunity to take that work off of our counselors and have a 504 specialist to be in our district that will take care of those things, at a pretty reasonable price, certainly compared to what CISA charges. The caveat there is we have to find one, so.
I know we talked a little bit. I have approved, that would be posted early, trying to get that filled, and have a slight advantage there, but if not, we would have to either go back to CISA, and you said that there's kind of that magic timeline in the summer to make sure they have the proper staffing and it's not allocated to other districts?
That's correct. And so we, we just kind of had a handshake agreement that, but in June, we would let them know we're.
Okay. That's a good reminder, just in case that comes, comes back to us if we're not getting the results that we're hoping for. John?
Shannon, can you explain, like, what school psychologist, how does a person, or how does the district go about knowing how many to have, or is it required that every district has one? Like, where, how does the, what's the triggers that, say, we need two or three versus one versus zero?
Yeah, so it's usually driven by the level of specialty needs. Evaluations are a really big part of that job, helping develop the plans. 504s are really getting to be big. A 504 is kind of a, kind of a symbolized, a simpler version of IEP. You still have to follow all combinations and these kind of things, and so that's kind of, that's relatively new, and those are just normal. And so many places, the school psychs oversee those, because you wouldn't staff that way. Our counselors that would take that, had to take that on, and that's at the expense of other things. And so usually it's driven by student needs and evaluations and the special.
Is there some sort of legislation that requires the, or sees some of this stuff, or like?
Yeah, sort of the testing side of it.
Position come from to begin with?
Yeah, so all the, all the initial evaluations have to be done by a school psych. And so, yeah, so that's, and so that's why you have a CISA, because if you're, I'll pick on Rip Lake, if you're a very small place, you obviously don't have those volumes, so that's what, that's the service that CISA provides. So we were using a part of a CISA psych this past year.
Right, and Jacqueline and Amber.
So I know you have one psychologist for the three lower buildings, and it's one for high school, but when you say apt buildings, do you mean, like, are they physically interacting and on-site?
Yeah.
Or are these more like, the evaluations, like telehealth-type things or consultation program?
No, they're physically with, in the building, with staff and students, working on behavior plans and evals. Yeah, they're in the buildings.
Okay, thanks.
Amber?
I was just going to say, I think a few years.
I was just going to say, I think a few years ago, we did have three and we had an issue finding them. And we only could find one one year, I think we got a second one another year. So I think this is just bringing back, or looking to bring back the staffing that we have had and just haven't been able to get it.
Our elementary ward is running between buildings constantly.
Right, any additional questions or discussion on this motion or agenda item? All good thoughts and questions?
I have another question.
Go ahead, Jacqueline.
I'm confused about, like, so in the motion, it projects or states an amount, but then when you look at the salary, it doesn't match.
Yeah, because that, that's a net cost.
Oh, okay.
Because we're paying, currently paying CISA for the other half.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any additional thoughts, discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is the staff handbook for 2025-2026. We do have some additional work being done on that, so I would look for a motion to table until we're ready to be fully presented. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, the reason that we're asking that to be tabled is that this time of year, it's mostly about the scheduled amendments at the back. And so it's like, you get to this point where you have a discussion about instead of having a link, who advises who is split to two, you know. And so I don't want to bring that back every month with every little small change. And so we're trying to tighten it up and get it all into one. None of those would go into effect until July first anyways. And so we've had a couple pop up in the last couple of days, some minor changes. So I just said, let's just table it until it's done, right? As far as the handbook is concerned, it's, it's largely edits, changes in titles, changes in dates. So there's no substantial handbook changes, it's mostly those schedules at the back.
With that being said, I would look for someone willing to provide a motion to table. Paul? I move to table this item. Motion to table, Paul, second from Nubs. All those in favor of tabling this item until we're ready to be presented at a future time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries to table that agenda item. Next item on our agenda is CISA nine shared services contract for 2025 to 2026. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray. A recommended motion comes from our finance human resources committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Dubs?
Moved to approve the CISA nine 2025-26 shared service contract as presented with a projected cost of $464,001.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Oh, second. We have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this agenda item or that motion? Any questions or discussion on that agenda item or motion?
I'll just comment that the two highlighted yellow ones in that contract are positions that we are looking to fill ourselves, including the school psych that was just approved. And so those would obviously come off there if we are successful in finding those people. Rest of it is largely rolling over from year to year.
Thank you, Shannon. With that being said, I'll ask, is there any additional clarifying questions or discussion on the motion for this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2025-2026 professional and teacher contract templates. Topic summary sheet was provided by Heather Silber. Recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? John?
Motion to approve the 2025-2026 professional and teacher contract templates.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to the agenda item or that motion?
There are no substantial changes to either contracts other than dates.
Any discussion or questions in regards to that motion or this agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2025-2026 coaches compensation plan. Topic summary sheet provided by Heather Silber. Recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Any board member willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve the 2025-2026 coaches compensation plan.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or this topic? Amber?
I'm sure you've heard when you talked about, they were going to look at numbers of participation that came to some of these. And that if the numbers weren't there, we wouldn't be hiring coaches at those levels if we didn't have like a JV to team or something.
And that is true.
I have a question, John. They're along that same lines, so what's the process for looking at what athletic programs are maintaining interest levels for continued investment? Take this, you know, this, this team is very active and has lots of members. And so there's always that competition where kids shift their interests. What's the process of saying, well, this particular sport, while interested by a few, it seems to be out of favor now in pursuing that as everyone?
Yeah, so I think what we do is we kind of evaluate those season to season. I'll use hockey as an example, you know, hockey numbers have been down, so we co-op. And some things have taken off, like trap has taken off. I don't know if trap has taken off at the expense of other things. But I, I would say factoring in decline in the moment, I think our programs have pretty much maintained where they're at. I don't know, does anything strike you as, oh, yeah, we, yeah, we have tests of drop and rolls basketball and that's been evaluated also.
And like you say, some of the indicators there, and if it's hockey, if it's basketball or whatever the sport may be, you can see in the, in the youth programs, right? We're seeing, they're tracking that and Hassan and coaching staffs are looking at, what is, what is that looking like, you know, moving, moving up as we get even to the high school? So some of those, we call them feeder programs or not, but some of the younger ages and the more success they have there, perhaps in their, their grade level. More kids come out and participate. Good example with the trap program, the better they have done or, or the swimming going to state or the wrestling program. Both boys and girls have, have fluctuated in a positive manner. So I look forward to maybe Mr. Hahn will present that in the, the end of year report that he provides, so. Any?
Did I answer your question, John?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Thanks, John. Any additional questions on the motion or topic or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is paid time off for PTO bank. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Heather Silber. A recommended motion came from our finance human resources committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
Move to approve the PTO bank and corresponding language to support staff of teaching handbooks.
Motion? Motion by Paul, we have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to that? Maybe an update, there were some things, you said Heather was sorting out, you were talking about market.
Yeah, click the link in the topic summary sheet, you can see the changes. This was discussed on HR finance and really kind of as a good example of how community, committee, uh, committee process works. So it was discussed, ideas were brought forth, we added language in there about needing to request FMLA to kind of tighten up the process as far as medical verifications. We added some language about fiscal years. And then we took some language at the end about all decisions regarding the bank, the allocations are final and comes from other places that do similar. And so those changes are reflected in there and highlighted.
All right, thank you, Shannon. With that, some follow-up questions, Jacqueline?
Yeah, I'm wondering, can her employee donate to another? Like, to me, this reads as though like people can donate, but it goes into this space that others decide about. And I love this, this idea and my, my own employer does it, but we're able to donate to specific people. So Michael Kyle lost her child and so they would donate a few days to them. But can you, does this also allow for instances where a person may want, I want to send it to, like, you know what I mean? Can you do that too?
It does not. So this is just, if you're interested in donating two days at the start of the year to build a pool, that's where it goes. And this, this model is pretty tough as far as not being able to. And we've had that request this past week, people wanting to donate to specific people. And we just think that that is kind of, it's just ridiculous.
All right, thank you, Jacqueline. Any additional questions on this motion or the topic? Yeah, I, I do appreciate tidying up with that language, it did make sense. And that was a great example of, of the committee process at work and looking into that, so.
We'll be sure, we'll be sure to report back over mid-year, end of the year, see how this works. We're close with this.
Okay, well, that sounds good. Hearing no additional questions or discussion on the motion, will vote on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a Neola special update for Title IX and reverting back to previous version of policy 2266. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Mr. Murray and a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? John?
Motion to remove policy 2264 non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities and refer to the revised policy 2266. Non-discrimination of, on the basis of sex in education programs or activities.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion on this motion or topic? John?
Just to clarify, so back in August, July, July last year, we had a policy come to us that was sent on a federal level to a local level. We adopted that policy based on federal action requirements. And this motion is reversing that policy and reinstituting the policy that existed in June.
Also based on Title.
Right.
Yes.
So basically, what happened in July now didn't happen.
Yes.
You know, when you're sent to Title IX jail, it's joked about already.
No, no, it also saves me the trouble of bringing it up next month, so.
Well, fair enough, thank you, John. Any additional discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is reduction of a shared queer teaching position between the high school and the middle school from 1 FTE to 0.5 FTE. Attached is a topic summary sheet from Heather Silber and a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion with this topic or agenda item? We are going to table this? Anyone willing to table this? Ron?
Motion to table.
So motion table from Ron and a second by Paul. All those in favor of tabling this item until we're ready to be presented by administration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That motion carries to table that item. Next is the strategic planning phase two, five-year strategic objective. Topic summary sheet provided by Shannon Murray and recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on that agenda item this evening? Nubs?
I move to approve the phase two strategic planning process documents as presented or as modified.
Motion by Nubs, second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on that or anything you'd like to highlight on that, Shannon or Amber? Order the process or serve Shannon?
Thank you. So phase one of our strategic planning process was revising ambition, vision, core values, those kind of things. We established those pillars, the teaching of our name, community engagement, human resources and facilities, finances and operations. The second step, which is the process that we just completed, was to come up with these objectives in each of those areas. Joe Schrader walked us through a process to get to that. These are a little on the bag side, but they help us provide the direction for the goal setting in individual years moving forward. And so it's kind of like you're approving that we're heading down the right path, I guess, is, is the purpose of this. The second document there are the metrics that we would use, kind of like the entire universe of metrics that we can use. We as a, as a group will go through and, and kind of whittle this down into ones that probably provide the best data, the best bang for our buck and not have 12 measures in each category. And so we'll define those out as, I think, these are the ones we're starting at and we'll kind of refine those in the next couple of weeks. So you're really approving that we're continuing down the right path, that the objectives are good and the metrics are good. And then Amber, you have anything to add to that?
John, do we have?
In Max's report, he mentioned a focus group of students that seems to parallel this type of activity. Is that what the intent was or is that a completely separate issue?
It's a separate issue, but the timing is interesting. And so you can speak to that issue, Artricia, but the data was a good process.
It was. We pulled together the group of students, we noticed maybe a decline in some of our club participation or club activities. So we wanted to get students together just to talk to them about, you know, why is that? Is it a culture issue? It was funny, we gave out a survey and we had to give a disclaimer about when we talked about culture and climate, that climate isn't how hot, terribly hot it is in the bathrooms, right? But it, it worked well, just to kind of get a pulse. We haven't since I, but it was actually Shannon's original process a couple of years ago. And Ally Libby was instrumental in helping design and carry out the process. And just thought, you know, we're seeing a little bit of lull in our clubs and the use of student participation, so let's ask them why that is. And see if we can come up with some tangible items that we can implement now so that they feel like their voices are heard. And it was just great conversation, but it was modeled off of something that Shannon did a few years back.
And I saw your little video on Facebook and that was a nice cross-representation of students.
It really was.
You had a nice mix there.
It was very intentional, it, it was great. And comment, so many students have said, we should do this again. And one student that normally maybe wouldn't have a voice at the high school said, this is such a great process. The four of us sitting at this table don't know each other and we're getting along great and heavy conversation. So it was really colorful.
Having done both, the strategic planning process kind of did what they call SWOT analysis. That yours had something very similar, so it's like, what's going well, what are the challenges, those kind of things? So they were pretty aligned, not, not coordinated, you know, just so I can never do this and say that. But I think good things will come of that and so we're going to refine that and kind of report on some actions to affect the students and.
Something's already started for a quarter.
Oh, we're good.
I guess that's where I was kind of leading, is that something that the? I guess that's where I was kind of leaning is that something that the strategic planning committee, while not designed by the committee, could adopt into their discussions so that they kind of indicate a better information, something like that.
Yeah.
Versus something often marginalized versus coming straight out of your building.
And we could, we could share that, hold that in.
Well, I think that's where that potential performance matrix comes in. Like it was, we kind of listed ideas and things that we have currently, but I think, yeah, as things like this come up and are developed, that's definitely something that they can play.
Was Maya in your group? Paul is?
No.
Okay. Because we had a student in ours who was very active participating, which was great.
Anything else, John? Any other board members with questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Motion carries with the noted abstention. We're at the point in our agenda of consent agenda before we, I asked for that motion. Anyone want anything pulled from the consent agenda to be handled individually? Hearing none, I would ask, is a board member willing to read our motion for consent agenda this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes minutes in February 19, 2025 and March 3, 2025 meetings. Claims, vouchers and receipts totaling $3,431,307.45. Recognition of donations required. The great speaker committee totaling $2,700. donations totaling $150 and attached personnel report contingent by piece of contract for hiring and unsatisfaction of appropriated liquidity damages for his contributions if applicable.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Brett?
Stayed from February 19 meetings.
Paul?
Stayed from February, February 19 meetings.
John?
Stayed from the.
February 19.
Meeting.
Amber?
Stayed from March 3.
All right, thank you. Motion carries with noted abstentions on those minutes. Next on the agenda is items for our future meetings. We do keep a running list of requested items, we try to stay on, on track and on top of it the best we can. Is there any additional items that people on the board have not mentioned to Shannon or myself or would like to bring up tonight? Keep on the list going forward. Keeping in mind if something does come up to trigger questions, feel free to contact us or any of the committee chairs to have it brought up at a committee level. Tomorrow morning, Mr. Murray and I will be on the radio program. Starts at 8:15 a.m., Blue Jay 730 radio station. Ronnie will be there safe and sound and we'll chat with him about tonight's board meeting. Future meetings, we'll have the head start policy council meeting be on Tuesday, April 8th, 5:30 p.m. at River School for Young Learners. CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets on Wednesday, April 9th, 4:30 p.m. here in the boardroom, followed by our finance human resources committee that same evening, Wednesday, April 9th, no sooner than 5:00 p.m. start. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, April 16th, 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Next, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, par. 1, par. 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Par. 1F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for if par. 1B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation. Purpose of the closed session is review administrative compensation and placement for 25, 26. Review performance evaluation data of teachers for consideration of continued employment, renewal of teacher contracts for 2025, 2026 school year for consideration of potential action approving issuance of preliminary notice of consideration of non-renewal of teacher contracts for the 2025, 2026 school year. The consideration of and possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and start college now programs and consideration of and possible action regarding parental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including potential for closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected students of the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such students pursuant to that section 19.85, par. 1, par. 1F of the Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed sessions may be immediately followed by reconvening an open session for further consideration, ultimately action upon parental requests at a minimum. Anyone willing to make that motion this evening? After reading that, thank you, John. Do we have a, do we have a second? Yeah. We have a second. Second by Paul.
I want to make the motion. Use this motion all night.
Yeah. We have a roll call on that, please, Sarah.
Jaclyn Gremler? Aye. Mike Cornisher?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Paul Prue?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Brent Waller?
Aye.
Nubs Ashbeck?
Aye.
Amber Durazo?
Aye.
Helen Lake?
Aye.